And reporting on this meeting is Neil Day and Shalit Kep, the three days of all of the uh, the, 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 the
Hello Board President, Board Members, Superintendent Gaines and Cabinet. We'd like to introduce you to Captain Wallace. He is our captain and for our Cadet Corps at Roseman High School.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to be here with you. Thank you for inviting us. At this time, our color guard will present the colors. A big stand, please.
Right face. Free zone, colors.
Captain Wallace, he is the first. We're going to do the national.
Order, colors. Left face. Forward march. Left, 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 right.
You can be seated. No, I, I didn't know if you want us to go the rest of our presentation or you have something to do.
No, okay.
Okay, alright. We are again glad to be here and I want to introduce our Cadet Battalion Commander, Cadet Captain Kaye Quelar and our Executive Officer Katie Shodin. Outstanding leaders and amazing, just amazing people to work with. So this is Cadet Captain Kaye Quelar.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Gaines and distinguished guests. Thank you all for your amazing support of our cadets. We are very fortunate to be able to do all the training and events we do because of our superintendent, board members and school staff. I am Cadet Captain Kaye Quelar, the 273rd Battalion Commander, 15th Brigade Commander and State Assistant S-4. And we have so much to tell you all, but in the short amount of time, I shall condense it. The CACC is a California National Guard Youth Program, giving cadets training in many subjects such as leadership, citizenship, military subjects and wellness. This school year is the first year where we've had the most cadet sergeants promote. We are also, we have also had a year in IMAs of three years in a row of our cadets placing within the IMAs of Cadet Sergeant Powell getting first place and Cadet Corporal Lopez getting third. The cadets have taught various classes going above and beyond to teach these courses. Not being asked to, they have made presentations and slides to add their own authentic selves into their presentation. They have done community service, state events and soon to participate in the BiWAC that will be occurring this weekend. I am so proud of each accomplishment and achievements that the cadets have made this year. The cadets have participated in Extreme Challenge, which is a team of 10 competing in 10 challenges that are mentally and physically exhausting. Our Warrior Unit consisted of juniors and seniors who had placed third place, earning the XTC ribbon with a Bronze Star. Our Club Unit consisted of freshmen and sophomores who had placed second place, earning the XTC ribbon with a Silver Star. They are the first cadets to ever place at XTC and we are very proud of their accomplishments. We also had cadets who participated in HHC and state staff and cadets participating and being cadet medics. We are currently excited for the cadets to participate in the 15th Brigade BiWAC, which will be taken and held at Camp Slow, learning life skills and training that could possibly save someone's life. As of this, the cadets are excited and will be teaching classes at this event. At the end of it all, Cadet Core works. Cadets are promoting, excelling and taking on challenges that the average teenager doesn't. At the school, we, we have after-school activities. The cadets are in charge of this training throughout the week. After school, the cadets participate in rifle drill, color guard and recondo, progressing constantly within the core. Cadet Core develops leaders and community builders. Now I will, I will introduce Cadet Second Lieutenant The Theory to continue on talking about XTC and his medic experience in teaching his class.
Hi, I'm Second Lieutenant Shodin and I went to exchange team with our teams. I was a medic and I taught a class with a commandant, Captain Chapman, who was blind, so we helped him. And I learned a lot from this captain and it showed me that even with your disabilities, he was blind, you can do anything in this world that you put your mind to. Also, as a medic, I learned that if you worry about the smaller things, you won't see the bigger picture, so always make sure that when you see those big things, make sure you're looking through the cracks and making sure that all cadets and all people are in there. Also, I want to say I'm very proud of our high school team and our middle school team for giving them their places. Thank you.
We call Kaden. Next to introduce the club leader who successfully took care of his unit and placed second place in club, Cadet Sergeant Ryan Melchers.
Thank you, ma'am. I am Cadet Sergeant Ryan Melchers from the California Cadet Corps at Roseman High School. This year at the XTC, it was my first year and just like many others, we were ninth and 10th graders, freshmen and sophomores, and I had no idea what was going to happen, what to expect, how it was going to play out. And quite frankly, I did not think that we could win. There was a lot of arguing within our group and I just thought that it was out of the picture for us to win. We were at the award ceremony that day and then we got calls for second place. I was ecstatic, as were many of the members of my team. Now, we have been through problems, but we were able to complete the mission, to get these scores and to fulfill the requirements needed for second place at the XTC. Thank you.
Now to introduce an amazing cadet and a cadet story to be given by Cadet Sergeant Haley Prestige.
Hello everyone, I am Sergeant Prestige. I've been a cadet corps for three years now. That was my first year freshman, I was a cadet from AFJ ROTC. I represent my assignment that we had a couple of months ago. The mission for Cadet Corps is to create outstanding leadership development opportunities for students. The vision is to develop students into tomorrow's leaders and today's community builders. To others, a mission, to others, a mission and a vision may be another sentence they have to read. To us, cadets, it means great more than words. The first year of Cadet Corps was here, I signed up for BiWAC. I was scared, nervous, frightened by other cadets because I only had to deal with cadets from our campus, from AFJ ROTC. When I got to Camp Slow, there were tents everywhere and emptying people who told me to go here and to go there. To make it even worse, they handed me a paper saying I'm starting for good too, something like that, I don't even know. Things worked out, worked out later that night. It was a great experience. Cadet Corps was also, was our last hope. We got the news in January 2019 saying JFROTC is leaving and there is not program available for our high school. So the senior cadets searched and looked for things to be said for our new cadets like myself, my commandant, my commander and many seniors now to have what they have. Our last hope was Cadet Corps, one that was presented from this, presented to the school board. With three years of being here now, my best memory is 9/11 event we did with Joseph Kennedy, Read the Path America, Survival UCLA and any state event I did plus being on staff for two years now. It took me a while to answer the question I've been asking myself when I got to Camp Slow for Survivor. I kept asking myself, why am I here? Why did I sign up? I, I got, at this moment, I did realize I was the only FEMA for my grade to go to Survival to win the red beret. I was lost. The most difficult part for me before Survival was my mental health. I told the FEMA commandant I gave up just by day three, which was, I had three days left. My PTSD was getting bad, being surrounded by mountains and the sun sparking home was not being it for me. I just wanted my mom, honestly. Once I'd begun to the vans after getting our red berets and hiking down that about eight miles afterwards, heading back to San Camp, uh, San Luis Obispo, I finally answered my question. I signed up because I had failed to myself the first drill and this training was one of the toughest mentally. I made it through with no blisters, two ticks on me, one behind it on my back, one on my neck and attacked by many ants. Fell multiple times and created great bonds, plus the MREs were so good then. We also hiked about 32 miles in six days. Another event I was nervous about was Extreme Team Challenge that we just had. I thought about it, I thought it would be a mix of recondo with climbing involved. I was so long, we did sleep in tents, I met new people from other schools like OMI. As Saturday came along, we played foosball with our feet which got attacked by dirt. Strategy games, some recondo training with rates and mental working challenges. It was hard to adapt to changes, working with teammates that I did not get along with in my school and the weather at night. Going to a state event was a great memory, jobs remember. It was so much fun that the Warriors, 11th and 12th graders of the high school came in third, the Club 9th and 10th graders of our address came in to second place. To all the cadets out there, all the kids and all the little ones that don't know what to do when they get to the high school, take Cadet Corps. You learn mental health and mental and physical strength, be a leader daily and escape home on the weekend, on the weekends if you go to Camp Slow. It's free, why not? Cadet Corps is a program to develop students to be the change of our community. It may seem silly to wear a uniform two times a week, but you have less laundry to wash. You get, you get to do summer events for weeks and you learn to respect yourself more because you view how you treat others and learn how, how to want to be treated by the same for yourself and other cadets and officers. Cadet Corps works because it brings opportunities to your life and you have no idea what to do. So just try and give, give it a shot and your life will change for what you truly intend to process.
So as you can see by these amazing stories, by these amazing leaders, that Cadet Corps works and we are excelling and continuing to progress. The TMS unit is very strong and they have so many cadets and I cannot wait to see those cadets flourish. Cadets learn, meet people, go places and I am so immensely proud of these cadets. If you had told freshman year me that I'd be doing anything like this and doing all the crazy things I've already done, I'd probably look at you and say, I don't know what hit your head, but can it hit my head too? It's, it's struggle, definitely. And Cadet Corps has taught me that being mentally and physically strong is something that is taught, you can't just get it. So I'm grateful for Cadet Corps and I hope you guys like Cadet Corps as much as I do. If we could have Superintendent Gaines, Ms. Akonini, Captain Kaye and Captain Wallace to help extend this warm welcome of the XTC awards to these cadets.
You want to know this is our Tropico Commandant, Captain Cahill. Next, XTC cadets, go ahead and stand up and when your name is called, come on.
Attention to orders, these following cadets have met the requirement for the Exchange Team Challenge Award with a silver, a silver star, second place, Club Division. Ryan Melchers. Charles Willis. Michaela Lopez. Morgan Peterson. Jacob Powell. Ace. Lance Ambry. These following cadets have earned the Exchange Team Challenge Award, Bronze Star, Warrior Division. Isaac Gutierrez. Roberto Ruiz. Amy Prestige. Jeremiah Gary.
I just want to give a round of applause to these following cadets.
Good evening, as I said, I am Captain Cahill. I am not only the Commandant at Tropico, I actually supervise the Central Valley as the 15th Brigade Advisor. So that's how Captain Wallace said, hey, my boss, can you come up here and take this job? So that's how you guys got me, I drive from Bakersfield every day. And I also work on the state level with their curriculum and I'm the S-1. But in all of those roles as the 15th Brigade Advisor, I had to arrange promotion review boards for Captain Quelar. I'm not even allowed to sit on those, it has to be a state level board, what she gets as high as she is. So at this time, I would like, Ms. Akonini and Ms. Gaines, if I can give you this, one of you, Shaberman, I would like to add.
Announce the attention to orders, the following cadet is promoted from the rank of Cadet Captain to Cadet Major, Kaye Quelar at the 273rd Battalion at effective date in 14 March 2022. The authority for this promotion is our state Executive Officer, Colonel Michael Smith. A personal goal that I've worked with on the state staff for now Major Quelar. She's got two more ranks to go, Lieutenant Colonel, like Colonel. Colonel is the highest grade in the Cadet Corps program and we have every aspiration and hope to get her there at summer camp this year. So she will finish her cadet career as the full Colonel. The second promotion I would like to do tonight is at my level in the Central Valley. That was before I was able to sit on. I would like to call forward at this time, Ryan Melchers. Ryan Melchers is being promoted from Cadet Sergeant to Cadet Staff Sergeant. These are the NCO grades, at which time this summer, Staff Sergeant Melchers will have the opportunity to either determine if he's going to continue up the NCO grade, reaching the position of Command Sergeant Major, or he has the option of diverting and joining the officer ranks and going to OCS and beginning that track. So the Cadet Corps offers both options to the cadets and some cadets go through the NCO track and then head on up to the officer track as well. And Staff Sergeant, Staff Sergeant Melchers has that opportunity because he did start Cadet Corps as a freshman. So I'd like to congratulate both of these promotions. Next, I'd like to introduce Roseman High School Early College Campus Robotics Team. And I would like to have their advisor come up first, Mr. Ton, introduce himself.
Yeah, I need to give us a couple of. A couple of things here and then we'll get to the president. Well, well, that will, will offer us, I am here, Officer Ton is here, Sergeant Eber is here, Jim Bender is here, one more is here, is this Missy here?
Yes, she is.
I mean, I should have given congratulations to someone. Frank Cranchi. And I'll give your congratulations, I'll be there for your lives and who can set us. So, of course, I'm just like, I'm separate, all of them. Hey, before we get, get over there, I just want, I'm overwhelmed. Cadet Corps, Mr. Wallace, what a wonderful job you've done. I'm just, I've lost the words when I watched that, that was so impressive. Thank you so much for all your hard work. You are creating young men or young women, young men and women into our future heroes and it's just fantastic to watch that. Thank you so much.
Now we have another great group of students, the Roseman High School Early College Campus Robotics Team. I'd like to introduce Mr. Ton, he is the advisor and he can go ahead and introduce his mentors that come from NASA and help as well as his team. Mr. Ton.
Hello everyone, this is my first in the form, it's a living nurse. Thank you. So, living myself, this is my second year teaching at Roseman High School, I'm teaching math and it's my first year running robotics club and I'm so grateful, these kids are amazing, I had a great time with them. So I just want to get into the fun part of the robot, so I guess I just want to introduce our club president, Sarah.
My name is Sarah Fawson, I'm the robotics high school's, no, I'm the Roseman High Robotics President for this current 2022 school year. Our rookie year for our team in whole was 2016 and in 2019 we had a really good blast for COVID. We were ranked 10th and 8th in our last two competitions. Our next competition will be April 7th through 9th at Eastside High School, it will be the Aerospace Valley Regional. This is our first competition in two years with a completely new team coming back after the break from COVID and all that. Robotics is a great way for your student, your child to learn STEM and engineering processes. If they're interested in the engineering field or even if they're not, robotics is a great way to just keep your mind going. It's, you can know how to build things, you cannot know how to build things, program things, anything like that and you still feel, you're welcome on the team. We have many different teams from programming to media. We currently are working very hard to get our robot ready for competition, once our building season started, which was on January 8th. We have a very strong leadership team this year that I'm very proud of. We have our Jasmine, or we have our treasurer Jasmine and our tab lead, Brian. We have Pluto with electronics, AJ, the drive tip lead, he's back there with the robot. We have Angie, our programming lead, Katie, our media lead, she's in charge of all the photos and stuff. And then me as manufacturing and being president. In robotics, we have three core teams to build the robot, get it ready for competition, everything like that. The manufacturing team is in charge of building the robot, padding it out, getting the design ready and putting something out there. We have a great electronics team to wire it up, they are in charge of all the wiring, connecting everything and making sure everything is going to be working good. And to provide the brains of the operation, because otherwise, what's a robot without brains? Is to talk a little bit about that, we have programming and I will review self-programming with Angie.
I'm sorry if I don't say this correctly, I don't have my glasses right now, so I can't see. So hi everyone, my name is Angela Salimdiavera, I'm the lead programmer in the robotics team. I present, I am proud to present to you what is the robotics team. Before you guys worry, don't worry, we will not go all world domination on you guys, yet. The essential thing that programming does is basically tell the robot what to do. We connect every single part of the electronics to, to all the parts that manufacturing does. So essentially, yes, we are the brains of this operation, you're welcome. From day one, we grab our programmers and we teach our, and we teach them ourselves how to program in this language called Java. This year, we, because we haven't been working that well, we've only been able to grab me, AJ and one more alumni to work with us to teach our amazing, beautiful programming team how to work several up. We work in all sections, so we are very well rounded, well rounded group, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So yeah, anything that you guys, none of us know what we're doing at the beginning. I'm still not sure what we're doing and I've been here for three years. So we try as best as we can to, to teach our group, especially to start stripping our robots down in order to build new ones. So without further ado, AJ here will present to you guys how, well, we work our robot.
That is our, that is our 2016 robot. So, this year's a bit different. I'd like to now introduce our mentors. We have Mr. Jason, can't pronounce his last name, Richman. There, and Mr. David Warzac. They're both from NASA. As well as, we had a short two-minute video that I think you guys should have.
My name is Sarah Fawson. I have no current work in the first year for the 2022 school year. For the bodies, it's been a stressful year, but it's also been a fun year. We're moving off of COVID, so everything's jumping around. Currently, we're working here on for our competition in April. But we've seen, all the students have been working very hard to make sure that we can go in and compete in competition in April. And while it's stressful for those competitions, it's also completely fun. And we work hard when we can and we know what we want to do for the competitions. We have so many who came this year, freshmen who seem to be, they're probably experiencing everything from COVID because we came back from COVID and those of us who were in COVID, though this is all completely different. And we are just pushing here. What do you want to say to the kids today?
Um, I remember it was actually a really helpful way of looking at how to solve problems. Because look at it from a perspective of, I just know what to do. I just know what the goal is in order to know when to step in there. Which is what you do programming them. They don't want to pass the mission. And where I have to go is when I can take my backpack and leave or go.
Yes, thank you.
So, how did you find out about robotics?
Uh, I was a freshman at the school and then I was saying, hey, do you want to be involved in?
Uh, what did you learn about robotics that you could use today?
Today and the future, probably programming and being on the top of people who are currently looking at everything.
And what's your favorite part of robotics?
Uh, probably, which is fighting for the US president.
Thank you.
And that is all. Thank you for your time and thank you for your support and coming out here and watching us talk about our robotics team.
Hi, my name is David Barachek. I'm the Center Chief Technologist out at NASA Armstrong Flight Research Center. What I want to do is talk about NASA's commitment to robotics across the nation. NASA gives over $2 million across the nation to teams. Based on, you know, we have grants that go up to teams and then we have what we call house teams. Our house teams are the teams that have NASA-minded mentors in their teams and we sponsor. House teams from $5,000 to $15,000 a year on our house teams. Roseman here, we have two mentors, myself and Jason Richman. We're both are NASA engineers and pretty committed to the program, pretty committed to the school and the efforts that they have here. I've been with this team for about four, four and a half years now. I was with Lancaster High School when my kids were there. And so that was a lot of fun. But NASA's commitment to the team is solid. Both Jason and I are there whenever the students are there. So if there's one student there, we'll be there. And Angie said that they're not going to take over the world. Don't bet on it. These kids are outstanding and they will take over the world. They will take our place. And, you know, we really appreciate the support of the school board because it really does take a big team. Sorry, I get emotional when I talk about robotics because it's so precious to me. My kids all went through the program. One is a high school teacher and a programmer in Arizona. My daughter is, works for STEM. I think it's Instagram now. I don't remember which one she works for. Instagram, Twitter, they're all the same. But, you know, it really does take a team. I think this is, this is, Aquanini has been great over the years. Mr. Ton, who came in as our advisor this year, awesome. For me, awesome young man. You know, he's younger than my kids. And so taking over a team and responsibility like this is a lot on a new teacher and a new mentor. So, really appreciate his time. And again, really appreciate the school board and everybody here because it does take this network of people to support the students. So, thank you. NASA's committed and we hope that the school board and the school stays as well committed. And, you know, as we expand and go into the next years, we're going to probably need a bigger shop here in Roseman. We're going to need a practice pad, someplace to actually run the robot. We've got a little room that's bigger than the stage. We're about it right now. And so as we expand, you know, we're going to go to the elementary schools. This is the first year, I'm sorry, I'm talking a little long here, but this is the first year, I think the team has got a very, very strong core. You don't teach programming at Roseman High School. These kids are learning the programming, the Java and everything else. Electronics is another thing that is well learned, well skilled that we need as NASA engineers. We need a good core technical group, your CTE program, your technical engineering program at Roseman is outstanding. And we're able to develop a partnership with those teachers. So that, that worked out really well. So, continue to support the robotics team. NASA will continue to support it at pretty high levels of, of resources and financial. And so, thank you and thanks for your time too.
Can I ask you a couple questions?
Oh, sorry.
I noticed on the video, one of the students was editing out the parts. They actually made these.
Absolutely. We, we have this, we have a small set of tools in the shop. We got, you know, a saw and drills and, you know, nothing. They don't, yes, so answer your question, yes, they make the parts. But developing the relationship with their engineering classes, we're able to use some of their water jets and that to also start making parts as we, we have a small team. We need to get the CAD done, so we, most of the parts this year are made by hand.
So were they, I noticed they look like they're trying to use some hyalogs and hub testers. Are they using, not using rivets?
Absolutely. They, uh, Jasmine and Katie are expert cutters over there. They, they're, they're the ones that can put the rivets in straight and, you know, not have to pop them out after they're done. So we usually use regular pop rivets. And they're doing all the riveting. The design is a collaboration between the mentors and the students. Lots of suggestions made. The students make most of the decisions on how the robot will look.
One more question. When we go to competition again, what would we like it to do?
Okay, this is a 2019 robot. This next year's team robot is, it's called Rapid React. So the competition is to take cargo, about nine-inch round balls, cargo. We shoot them up into about a 10-foot goal. It's just a big circle up there. High goal, upper hub, lower hub. And then at the end game, it's to hang the robot. So when you watch the video, you'll see two hooks that we had, that we were kind of playing with. Those will reach up about five feet high, pull the robot up. And then one will reach back, grab the next bar over here, pull itself up, release this one and it'll swing back. And then one more time, we'll reach back one more time to go to the, the transversial bar and pull ourselves up from that. And that's, that's the goal, is to shoot the cargo into the hubs and then climb on, in the hanger. So it's a transportation team there. You go to, just go on Google and type in first robotics competition 2022 competition and you'll see that. If you go to, there's a lot of YouTube videos since this is going to be, this week is going to be the third week of competitions. So there's a lot of competition video out there and, you know, I'd show you and you can sit here and rest a night watching the, as a game announcer. So I expect you to do the play-by-play. And the teams down there are outstanding and based on our design of the robot, I think Roseman will be a pretty competitive team in, at the Antelope Valley, Aerospace Valley Regional at Eastside High School, 7th, 8th, and 9th. You guys are all invited to come on down. It'll be an awesome event. We'll have students from different teams escort VIPs around. So you can come on down and, you know, let me know. I run the regional, so I'm in charge of it. So, you know, we'll, I think the robot will be really competitive this year if everything works as planned. But as you know, nothing ever works when you first bring it out, so we'll see.
Thank you, Sarah.
Hey, no worries. Thank you.
Just a few questions about my going to thank you and also your partner there.
Thanks, Sarah.
Okay, welcome, welcome to all of us. Now, I've known Dave for many years. Well, I think we're close to 30.
30 years together.
30 years. And he has volunteered. I'm glad that he came to Roseman, because I saw what he did at Lancaster. And he's, Dave did this, he's, he and I have known each other from sports, from shooting football. So here to see him on, go to a football game, you'll see him there. And this year, he was speaking, he's a little mad at me because he was the oldest official spirit-wise and I'm coming back and taking him away from him. But he is the greatest guy I've ever met. I've worked with, I didn't work with him in NASA, but I did work at the Edwards. And I could see in chat. So Dave, again, okay, guys, thank you for coming to Roseman and hopefully you're going to stay with us for a long time.
Right, until I retire, probably. So it could be another four, four years or so, four, five years, and then we'll see what happens. But again, thank you, Bob, for the support. And again, we can't do it without the school board's support on, for the robotics team and the efforts of the students and the school. So, thank you.
Dave, thank you for the awesome demonstration and, um, I'm going to go.
Good evening, everybody. Board, Mrs. Daniels, cabinet members. My name is Coach Mark Nottingham. I'm the head girls soccer coach at Roseman High School. I'm joined by Coach Mike Ian, he's the head boys coach. We compete in the High Desert League in the California Central section. And in order to compete at, at that level and have successful seasons like we had, you know, the boys won league. We finished third, we made the playoffs, we hosted two playoff games. The boys had a league defeat, we had a league defeat, we were up here in the French. Major Quelar, the all, all league team member. And in order to compete at this level and do these things, we have to have transportation to do. The past couple of years, because of pandemic or budget issues or whatever, it's been kind of hectic getting to and from games. We have to, to cancel games and whatnot. This year especially, because of COVID, a lot of games were canceled, rescheduled, added up at the last second. And our transportation director, Ms. Desiree Castro, always told us, yes. We were able to get to our games safely and on time and we're able to compete at this high level. I'll let Coach Mike say a few words and then we just have a thank you for Ms. Desiree Castro.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Coach on the Coach. Mark said, we want to, we want to thank you all for all the support, the guidance, always having our back through last year's season, just playing and always being there for us, especially this year's season, coming back and trying to bounce from there. So we do appreciate all of you, the principal, the superintendent, the table, the parents, and all the people behind the seats that make the difference. It's not just the coaches, it's not just the players, it's a whole team. So I want to thank all the Roseman community. Appreciate all of them.
Desiree, you come up and we have a little poster for you to hang in your office.
Hello, good evening. Obviously, I want to congratulate all the students and staff members for their recognitions tonight and their amazing achievements. I have three topics on tonight's agenda to touch upon. First of all, item 8C, which is the approval of the 2022-23 school calendar. I met with the RTA Executive Board yesterday and there is still great concern over the calendar being recommended for adoption. The issue continues to revolve around the parent conference day. Members of the Executive Board feel that conferences on a Friday during regular school time does not give parents an ample opportunity to meet with teachers. The district's LCAP plan and all school site plans call for improved communications with parents. This calendar reduces communication. RTA would like to continue to explore other options. We recommend the board table the vote on this item and that the district schedules one more meeting of the calendar committee to hear options and ideas from RTA members that are on the committee. Secondly is item 10B, which is the second interim report on the budget. I simply request the opportunity to ask a few questions during the presentation. And then lastly, item 11A, certificated employment and resignations. This is personal. I look forward to the board's vote tonight on this particular item. But I would also like to point out that myself and Mrs. Almost are on the agenda for retirement. Lula and I were hired the same year within two weeks of each other. I always remind her of my seniority over her. I am number three on the seniority list and she is number four, even though she argues with me every time on that one. It has been my pleasure to work with Mrs. Almost for 30 years. She has given an unparalleled contribution to our EO and migrant students over that time. Our Hispanic community can tell you the incredible value she has done in the classroom and in the community. And I deeply appreciate everything this Almost has done for our students. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I still have a lot of students. We have baseball, football, have all sorts of games and Eastside League next week. We have baseball club, have all sort of games, and we start league next week. Students are creating serious experiences. We're planning a color run for special Olympics. We also have a few representatives from Clucksfield to the middle school to kind of talk about their experience and what they'll be doing throughout the year. Thank you for your time.
Senior or fourth? Very good. Good evening. Firstly, I'd like to start off by saying thank you to the Cadet Corps and obviously the soccer coaches for coming out tonight. And so, let's maybe talk about your experiences with the last start of the month that we were able to have a faculty to return to the high school. I want to say thank you to the staff and administration and everybody who were able to attend that. It was one of the weirder weather days of this year. So the turnout wasn't quite as ample as we were hoping for, but we were able to hold off. Next one, we're doing the same thing at Clucksfield Middle School. The, and Cindy has the vote for that from now beginning this season, so they'll continue to stand as standing throughout the district. And then lastly, I want to say publicly that we're extending events, which has been included over our high schools, so that if there are students and families that have issues getting to school because of transportation issues, we're looking to really do that with the district there.
Assistant superintendent, Ms. Lacy?
All right, I would also like to thank all of the high school different teams coming out tonight to talk and share with us all of the exciting things that have been happening at my school. It's so great to see all the things happening with the Cadet Corps. And, and, I'll be honest, I walked by the other day and watched the robotics team out there, and I wanted to join them. I'm pretty sure they would have left me if I made them. But it was, they looked like they were just having a ball out there. So it was really exciting to see that. And next, I had the opportunity today to see the district's oral language arts festival at West Park. West Park's the oldest festival this school year. It was an amazing event. For our humorous solo, we only had one competitor. And so she will be moving on to our regional, the regional competition. That will be on April first in Mojave. And that's Pippa Rinden. For serious solo, there were two competitors. One was Cassandra Rivas and Riza Rodriguez. Cassandra Rivas was the first place winner, and she will be moving on. Our serious duos were Chloe Sheetz and Dominic Luna. So it was just one duo in that section. And then for humorous duo, there were three different sets of duos. So we had Francisco Aradano and Marissa Rojas, who won first place. And then the other two competitors are Alexander Peet, Tristan Galban was in one duo, and Alexa Maggian and Natalia Sepulveda. They also competed. And I will tell you, the competition for all of these was amazing. And then we did have one first choir. And so all of these students worked together for theirs. And that was Esteban Ganas, Donna Casada, John Marquez, and Norberto Diaz. And all of the first place winners, like I said, will move on to the regional competition on April first in Mojave. And I have a feeling, based on what we saw today, that we might have some people moving on to the county competition because our students did a fabulous job. I would like to thank Mrs. Han for her work with our students this year. She did a fabulous job. She usually, I mean, she always does. We're going to miss her. She's retiring next year. She's definitely an asset to the oral language festival. We had our judges that came out, timekeepers and calculators. And we want to thank all those people that came out to support our students today. It was, it was just a really great experience today, and I was happy to be there. That is it for me this evening. I just want to wish everyone a fantastic spring break next week and thank everyone for all their hard work, all the staff, teachers, classified staff, everyone that's out there working really hard. Thank you so much.
Associate superintendent Marcus?
Good evening, everyone. I too want to say congratulations to all of our students that performed the things we should have taken for. Those new that promoted and did such a great job. Robotics and then our soccer teams did amazing this year. So congratulations for all your work. HR, we're always very busy trying to fill those holes that we have. Lots and lots of interviews have been taking place, mostly for our educators, students, maintenance. We're always looking for our educators to fill some of our spots. We've also been starting to host some positions of special education, general education, and we need to fill some of those spots for twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And Jim, I just want to say that we certainly appreciate you and that your spot will certainly be hard to fill for many reasons.
Assistant secretary?
Good evening and welcome. It is always such a treat for me and I'm sure the board and cabinet say, to see so many people in the audience. Thank you and welcome. I too had the pleasure of attending the oral language contest today at West Park. And I want to echo what this Lacy said. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to our wonderful second grade teacher, Mrs. Baycon, because, uh, Mrs. Baycon, because without her leadership and guidance and the time she starts talking about this oral language contest, I think she started begging me on the first day of school. And I was like, you have to do this during the first day of school. But it's a project that is obviously very near and dear to her heart. And today, I was absolutely, just enjoyed watching these young children perform. And not one of them missed a word. And they had to look it in, they had all of their lines memorized and were articulating them with, it was a bit funny, they made you laugh. So I'm looking forward to seeing how we do in Mojave. So thank you again, West Park, Dr. Wolden, and especially Mrs. Han for her work in this contest. Last night, we had our varsity football banquet. And it was such a treat. We had the dean of athletics and kinesiology from Hambel Community College was the guest speaker for the boys and their families. It was so great to, to end. The football season was such a high note. The boys were, you know, they were very appreciative. And I want to thank Mr. Ed Chevlen, who was there and made sure that there was plenty of food and families and everyone. And he really enjoyed themselves. And we look forward to, we're really looking forward to a great football program next year. Cadet Corps, Captain Wallace, I don't know what else I really can say. They never cease to amaze me what you, what you do. You and Captain Gail, which are young people. It's incredible. I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. And robotics, I love robotics. Don't know anything much about them, but I love watching theirs. So Mr. Khan and great work. Also want to thank our tremendous score from NASA. I appreciate you selecting Southern Kern as the place that you want to come and support us in this, in this work. And I want to say that transportation is going to be binding, transportation for our athletic teams at Tropico. Am I correct in saying that? Yes, I'm very excited about that. And I know that Mrs. Astro has, is just, I love working with her because she's very focused on doing whatever we can for our students. Thank you, Desiree, for that. I so appreciate that. I know I'm going to have so many down here, but for you, I think that's it. Last month, last month, when I gave out the attendance award, I was extremely disappointed because every one of our sites for the month of January had shown absolutely no growth in attendance percentage. And this month, for the month of February, I'm so excited to say it's the absolute opposite. Every one of our schools showed an improvement in attendance. And I think that is partially related to the fact that as our COVID exposures and the number of our students who were actually becoming ill with COVID decreased. Last week, we had three, and the week before that, we had two students out of three thousand five hundred fifty-one being sacked who had tested positive for COVID. So we're very, very excited about that. So it was very close, I want to say, that Mr. Webster gives me this data every month. So for most improved, most improved attendance goes to with a six point seven two percent growth from January to February to Roseman High School. All right, for best attendance percentage elementary, I don't know what to say, with a five point seven, five point seven six percent growth, West Park Elementary. And for best attendance secondary with a six point one nine percent growth in attendance, the award goes to Tropico Middle School. Mr. Ergen, you will make sure that all three of these schools get their, students get their treat for their attendance awards.
We're waiting for you. Okay. Thank you for coming. One of the things that we as a school board likes to see is the growth of our school, not only in amount of students, but in achievements. And for students, that's what we do.
Hello. I'm excited for everything that's going on with the robotics team. I'm rooting for you guys on Eastside. Hopefully you guys bring home some goals or whatever they're going to give you with another robot after that. I'm excited for you guys to be working Java and coding and all that stuff. So that's exciting. The net core, you guys are awesome. Keep doing what you're doing. Your leadership is amazing. And we're interested in having friends like Sarah's coming. This mother's all over, bringing the likes of, I don't know what's going to happen around here. Let's see, grow something. It's a lot of fun. Playing the dirt is good for you. That's all I have.
I just thank everybody who came on. I used to see you respond in the face of shame. So some of you might have to go, "Dad's up in recognition." Been a long year, it's true. I want to thank the team of students, it's awesome. I was so impressed. And as long as I'm on the board, we have our full support. Decided what's going on. I wish the Valley Press was here so they could write headlines. Watch out, Roseman's on a roll, watch out. And then all our teams are doing fantastic. We're developing programs, helping students. It's just amazing. It's great to see. Jim, I have to agree with you. I am going to miss Mrs. Almost. You do have a double on there. Secretary of State, I wish we could vote a little more. And Jim, I also want to thank you because you deserve a lot of credit. My son is now four years old. He talked to me about you. He regrets. And he felt that he still remembers, and he just isn't. So it's like, thank you. So you've done a beautiful job. And you are going to be missed. You know, thank you for the argument. Again, thank you everybody.
Hey, so I just want to say, I'll have to be back finally after the last board meeting. This time I have, it took me a couple of weeks to get better, but I'm feeling better now, so I'm going to be back. Mr. Wallace, thank you for all you do with these cadets. How do you say it, Wallace?
Kay.
Kay, don't thank you, you too. I always see the cadets walk around town ready for something like that. I just know it's going to be a good day. I remember I walked out of my ASB classroom, all the cadets would always salute me, and I was like, I don't know why. I'm not even a new cadet, of course, but I always see them out there yelling and all that. I have to stop my meetings sometimes because of it, but I always enjoy it. Congratulations to West Park, Tropico, and those of our high school and the guys' attendance awards. And robotics, we're reporting about Eastside High School. I'll try to make a comment, I promise you. And I just wish you guys all a happy, safe spring break. Mr. Wall, thank you for all you've done over the years. We'll be nice.
It's just amazing to see the amazing kids that we got. They're awesome. You guys are the leaders of the world. You will be sitting up here, taking care of the world. This is leaders in the community. Your captains are teaching you great things. So keep paying attention. Robotics, good, we're going to be landing the next stuff up on the moon and Mars and everywhere else. So it's amazing. You guys, what you're doing now is just amazing. I wish, I would have had this stuff set up when I was in school. But we're a bit of a lot of stuff. Mr. Wall, we're going to miss you. Sally doesn't care though, that's always true. The souls I've known for quite a bit of her life are like, our families have actually been good friends. So I'm not going to miss her, she'll be over the house. Webnet, did you get any help comments?
No, no comments.
Thanks, sorry. Just wherever you go, let me know. On ILO, there is a change for the increase is going to be 50 more students going through this. How does it work? Some problems, sorry. So the ASB is making the conditional fees. So it's $8,898 in the process. So we want to change the, because there are a lot of other questions on any of the candidates.
I do. I have a question on I D for the school innovations and achievement, A2A, student attendance, and I D. So my question was, is this a new system or is this a continued subscription of the management for attendance? I just want a little more clarification on that.
It's not a new system. We've been using this system. And this is just a continuation. We don't want to contract. They do a really good job. They let us know, they cap on all of our attendance. They provide us letters that are sent out to parents. Sometimes they do brochures. They tell us how many students need to have parents. And you have those conferences, it's been admin. So they let us, they keep very strict data, which we can see data trends for a three-year period. We take three years' data for trends. We can see the trend in how attendance is doing, how we did during COVID, and how we're now doing even better than actually for a little higher than we were. Thank you, one.
Anyone else? Group that we need to accept in San Marcos? We should have this one. Say your name, or a favor? Group, I would bring up a very important session. For the purchase and installation of eight modular classrooms, or two, 28 modular classrooms, for that, for the local, for Tropical Middle School, and a extended extension project in the amount of $8,000, $52,680. And that's all I can say. Mr. Ergen, would you agree with what we're going to do?
Yeah, so for the, and just to add a thing, from control, as part of the process we're going to be R and B for the server thinking with the CD and ESA approvals, so through OPSC. AMS can, and the law was the norm for a product. By approving this, we are not bringing ourselves on the hook for any hours of the project, where the funding weren't offered with the PSA. So it is so that we can, when approved, AMS can serve a program on the building, so we share the fair PSA approval, and it keeps the price at the $8,000, $52,680. And that way, it doesn't increase, and it's, we're saying with almost everything these days, that price is keeping up. That will not happen with this.
We have a clause to stay by with that, right? Also, if it happens again, if this, if we invite this, it's just going to lock you off. Right? Yes. If we don't have this locked in, we can't go in for the $21 million that we need to accomplish that space. In case, if there is, this is a project that we started back in 2012. Oh, yes. Trying to get my team to build more modules at TMS, and we're going to build more of those. And the state's taking this one, promises, pretty believable, and promising now that it might actually happen. The classrooms are, from modular systems, are the same classrooms that we just put in right there. And then, for you, if I can see exactly. Sorry, I'm trying to figure this. So I'm trying to figure out if we're having them. So yeah, they're very nice to me there. You can size, if you didn't know, you didn't know that they had to move yet. They have that. Hey, I can talk to them. So I didn't wish to, since I've been past, don't use words like mine, because we've been doing this since 2012, we promise. This time, for sure, 28 million dollars.
Well, the fact that it's 48 dollars too.
Oh, you're 21.
Take notes, sir.
I'll send them. Mr. Ergen, second, or a favor? A group agreement with first systems, specific to provide geological and geotechnical hazardous report for Roseman High School Cafeteria Project, in the amount of $19,500. This geological, uh, geotechnical, geological hazard report is wired by the Division of State Architects and the California Geological Survey as a prerequisite for the project approval. That's for the Cafeteria, for the high school. Any questions? Hey, did you want some promotion? Mr. Ergen, select a second. Say your name, or a favor? A group made 2002, 2022, 2023 annual school calendar. Sorry.
So we do have our calendar that we, on the agenda for approval tonight. At the last meeting, we talked about, gathered some data as to why we felt it was important that we have that in our history. So Robert was able to get this one. So in 2016, '17, we had, we had Friday off, and we had Monday off, and Tuesday, our attendance was 93.89%. In 18, '19, that Tuesday, our attendance was 93.63%. In 19, '20, our attendance was 95.15%. Plus, or in April 2020, we don't have any data. That was when you went out for COVID. So we don't have any data for that. Last year, when we did, on half of the day off, it would be back on that Monday the fifth, our attendance had dropped to 8.77%.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, I can. What were you saying about the parent conference day? The teachers on the executive board, you know, you have parent conference day on next calendar, on Friday. During the school day, fewer parents will attend the conference. It will turn into a degree. And so we will not have the level of communication that we would have if parent conferences were on Thursday. We've also talked about, you know, the fact that the parent conferences got changed from, we've said it from 1:00 to 8:00 on parent conference day. So that parents had evening conferences available. It was changed a few years ago to, just during the school day, hardship for a lot of parents to make conferences. This is during the school day. We want to explore the options to make it as available for parents to meet with their child's teachers as possible. Things that will go for the district and with teachers that would be more effective in some ways.
How would we teach it?
Oh, the way, the way we've done it, it actually creates boarding again. Because we have conferences on Thursday, so students can be at Thursday and Friday, and come the weekend off. So, you know, I mean, if they're going to come to the conference, they're going to come to the conference, whether it's on Thursday or Friday. So it's a three or four day rule for students, either the calendar or the weekend. And the Great Shakeout is, is a nationwide program that we have participated in the last couple of years. And that's always on the third Thursday, so it's always been here. So when we were, when we were going through the calendar, we had the Great Shakeout on there. The teachers had said, well, if we have conferences on Friday, it's possible to move. Also, the minimum day is, when we had on Thursday, the minimum day was Wednesday. So we had a minimum day Wednesday, and Thursday, so they said, okay, well, if we're going to do conferences on Friday, can we move that minimum day to Thursday? So that would be fine, because, you know, regardless, we were not going to have, teachers are always giving that day to prepare for conferences at minimum day. So that's why the Great Shakeout is not divided in a separate color, but it is in the minimum day colored. But we would still participate on that Thursday.
What was the attendance the year before the COVID?
The year before COVID, it was 95.15.
What day was that on?
So that was also, we had the Friday and the Monday off. And so that was coming back on Tuesday, the 23rd of April, and it was 95.15.
Very, very peaceful.
I'm sorry, you just changed. Well, Spring Break doesn't necessarily have to be commended to Easter. Sort of the way we've done it over the last several years is just, it kind of goes along with the high school district and some of the districts that are surrounding us. And also gives us, if Easter's not in, if Easter is in April, then watch as a whole, look for the holidays. And sometimes if, you know, Easter, like last year, was a little late towards the end of April. So it just, it just depends really where Easter falls.
So I have a question. I'm not on the founder committees, I don't see you in this. I know the issue is the Great Shakeout and that Friday being the day that the conferences happened. What if we pushed to parent-teacher conferences out of the week? And then is the issue still a holiday, holiday week? Any information? Is that the main problem? Or is it the shakeout?
Yes, so the teachers would like that, would like to have it on Thursday, and then have the local holiday on that Friday. So, you know, that's, that's kind of the issue there. It's been something that we've had for many, many years. But some of the classified staff and other staff that, I'm personally, challenged, who really felt that it was important for families and for staff, that if one people had traveled over the Easter holiday, it was just a problem again. And so that was why they really liked having the local holiday there where, you know, where they felt it was a greater benefit.
Because I just, I just feel like having Spring Break tomorrow, that's just getting, it's a week off.
That's just how it is, right?
And as far as where our talk is going, though, I, I, I.
What is, what do you think, what does this mean to you?
Well, we're hoping to be able to, in approval, we're seeking to be able to get it out to our mailings where your applications and, and stuff.
So what's the biggest issue when it's just been Friday?
I sort of agree.
Yes.
I sort of agree that nighttime is better.
Not while having a Friday off, it's while having better contact with our parents.
Well, in the conversations through the calendar, we need to do this mainly before the Friday off. So that's, that's my, that's my provision.
It's a more involved conversation than that, and that's why we asked for it to be tabled, so that the committee could have one more meeting.
Well, I just put it this way, a parent conference is a parent, you know, have to, it's just very, very take work off under their, it's a parent conference. And they don't take work off, and they don't want to, and they don't want to leave. That's, it's hard thing, but those aren't going to, maybe it's lots of work at the clock. Why not? What happened to that? No, no.
That was, I mean, Jesus, I was.
That was a cheap, not huge.
Why?
Well, because we feel that they're, you know, surrounding areas that is really not safe, that the conferences are always open.
That's just.
Well, I believe that October 20th, the Great Shakeout has to be, you need to be consistent with everybody else. But I don't feel that there'd be a big concern or hurry to, to table this for another week or something. Just one more discussion. I mean, I'm okay with it, but I really like to, if we can't go to the nighttime teacher conference, then this is fine with me. But I would really like to see how we could do that, because I really believe that people after work would come more, could talk to their teachers at night.
So it's a hell of a life, but we discuss, people work. And they do want to talk to their teachers.
And that's, that's why those shootings are tight, but if you have the nighttime conferences, that you put in at eight o'clock, and then you have to clean up every setting, and you have some teachers up there, thirty minutes to an hour away. That's why it was always very important then to follow this, be a non-student day. Because if you're sitting home at nine, ten o'clock, and you're talking all day, nobody, nobody who's not been a teacher and sat through a day of conferences has any idea how exhausting it is. I've heard so many times in these committees, oh, why do you need the next day off? You're just sitting and talking. You have no idea how exhausting it is. And then you go till eight o'clock, which a lot of teachers like doing, so they have a better chance of meeting their parents. That's why their time is a great one. But the members of, the RT members of the calendar committee and the executive board members have a whole ideas that relate to what Miss Hefford said regarding the shakeout. We know how important that is to the district. Relates to trying to, find time later in the day for parents, maybe not all the way to eight o'clock, but later in the day. There are some options there that we don't feel we have ample opportunity to. There are some options there that we don't feel we have ample opportunity to, to be considered. But I, that hearing from the committee members was, we didn't have a voice. We probably had ideas in their trial.
Okay, I'm gonna make a move motion in the cable here. And we're gonna give one more opportunity for them to speak. And if there's, if there's no changes, I'm happy. I won't make a motion in the cable.
Same here, I have a question.
So what's the exact set of instructions by the parent conference or not? Is that just because only this shirt that they're wearing?
We checked out because we, we felt that parents would come, they would, they wouldn't come back home with something that's.
Okay, like I've been mentioning, that's like my mom, yeah. They'll get out at five o'clock in the morning, and they'll get off at five o'clock. Especially in other community resources, federal programs. There is no time. You don't get a lot of time. And evening conferences always work on us. And we can work for five years too many times in this district. We're not getting something because like that sort of a hobby or nothing. I really don't care what they're doing. I'm not on their board, and I'll take it off them. I think probably they're in here, they're attempting to our. But if there's no, there is a difference. But I get this.
We change meetings.
When's the next calendar meeting?
Well, we have this calendar.
Two weeks? Are we okay for two weeks?
Sure. It's great.
And do we, do we have to bring this back?
Absolutely. And we'll also have to make sure that CSAA and everyone else who's wanted to know that we're providing to that.
We make sure they're there. If they're not there, that's it.
They'll always be there.
Okay. Let's, let's hear what the other single person has to add. I make a motion, we, we table it. So next week, give another chance.
I have a motion on the floor. On paper?
Aye.
And I have a question, so I have a, I. Three, four. I have a name. Group of two, twenty-one, group two, ten of the board of trustees of the Southern American School District support preschool, transitional kindergarten and whole day kindergarten facilities for program.
As we move closer and closer to the universal pre-K and K incorporated, what's currently in our pre-K instruction, um, we see that California has opening up opportunities for funding for districts to improve their facilities so that we, we have a good space and rooms that are the proper size of what they still is. Children that need to acquire markers where they can put a new classroom. They, you know, they're coming into food service and stuff like that, all the stuff that are, you know, lumber, things, toilets, cafeteria cables and all of that, you know, adequately, you know, have, uh, equipment and everything that allows even ten year people to, you know, current pre-K kindergarten. So as part of the application process, um, to get them all, we need, uh, do that with progress emissions for the whole day. We should go like a transition kindergarten to maximize our, our opportunity for state funds.
So we start with our group resolution to ask for state funds to give our pre-k classes for guidance and more guidance for the, uh, for the future.
Did you say pre-k?
Yes, that's a, that's awesome.
Yes, the future.
Okay, so this is a resolution.
I make a motion.
First one, Mr. Bender, say it right now, on paper, aye. Missed it? Missed it? Group of two, twenty-one, twenty-two, eleven for, for trustees of Southern American School District support pre-k, transitional kindergarten and whole day kindergarten facilities and.
Yeah, ones for flexibility, others for, uh, transnational kindergarten.
Oh, that's it, okay. Once we school, we'll. I think there was a motion.
Second.
Motion, that's what I have heard, on paper.
Aye.
Aye. During the public conference, um, in A through G, conditional group grant, and this is.
The A through G completion agreement grant plan, uh, what the program was started this year. It was approved by the CTE. And we have to come up with a plan by April, we have to develop a plan by April first. Um, the requirement is to bring it to the board for discussion at a board meeting and then for approval at a subsequent board meeting. Uh, the funding that we have been allotted, um, from, for this grant is two hundred eighty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-eight dollars. Um, the basic purpose of this grant is to improve and increase services to underprivileged students in ways that will increase their A through G development. Uh, funds to be used to provide opportunities for eligible students to retake A through G courses. If they took a course and they had a grade lower than a C minus, so either a D or an F, we have to make sure that we are providing them with that opportunity to either make up that, uh, that make them have a better grade in that course, or if they receive an F, to be able to get a grade that would be, um, sufficient. Uh, and then also the grant funds could, uh, we need to just, in the grant, make, uh, our plan, make sure that we, our funds that we are using do not sup, they are supplement, not supplanting any other plans like LPAT or any of the other learning recovery plans. Also, as part of the requirements in this plan, we had to come up with a metrics for a way to measure the impact of a grant funds. So the grant that I, uh, we put together for you tonight, uh, for that two hundred eighty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-eight dollars, um, was to put, pay for a, an additional college and career counselor at the high school that focuses truly on college and career readiness for students. So having that, um, that piece, uh, looking at students' grades for their A through G courses and making sure if they did have a C minus, uh, grade lower than a C minus, that we are actively making sure that they are either have the ability to retake the course or if they're not, if it's a course that they necessarily need to make, but maybe we give that choice to them that they, they can retake that. Also, um, it also is the CTE or the college and career counselor is going to check students' grades throughout the year, uh, to see if they are earning a D or an F. And meet with those students, possibly, and their parents to come up with a plan for them to increase that grade. So we don't have to take that, retake that class at a later date. They're also going to work on recruitment for concurrent enrollment in college courses, uh, organizing college and career events, uh, coordinating field trips to go out to colleges and possibly tech schools, uh, and developing plans to increase our avid course enrollment, helping with the CTE coordination and being, uh, being the avid site coordinator. Uh, and so there's a lot of different things that we put into that position that's really going to truly focus just on getting our students college and career ready. Uh, and also as part of the funding, we're, we're gonna pay for a portion of that to pay for professional development for that college career and just these specific areas that we want them to work on and focus on. And then also to provide additional avid PD for the avid teachers that are specifically teaching the avid, um, elective courses as well as the tutors that we have that work in those classroom settings. Uh, for the evaluation piece of the plan, uh, some of the things that we're gonna be looking at are the number of students completing CTE pathways, number of students that complete A through G requirements with a grade of C minus or higher, uh, number of students enrolled in added classics, the number of students concurrently enrolled in college courses, and the number of students accepted to colleges, universities, and trade schools as they leave, uh, both in the high school or early college campus. Uh, we feel that this plan is a good one. Tonight, as part of this plan, we have to bring it to the board for discussion and then at a subsequent board meeting have you approve the plan. So tonight is just to have you guys discuss your thoughts of this plan and then at the, uh, next board meeting we'll bring it to you for a vote.
Uh, we need to recess for public comment on this. So, motion, that's what I have said, I have heard, on paper.
Aye.
Uh, this is recess. So anybody who can ask questions at this time?
On this subject.
Yes, on this.
So this is gonna be for a counselor?
Part of it, yes.
And they're gonna, it's full time?
That, this, this is gonna be for half of the counselor and then there's another grant that's gonna be for the other half of the counselor. And they will work with both Rosen High School, uh, and then also watch alternative, uh, uh, students.
Basically, a one full counselor that can watch one of these students from nine till twelve.
Well, we, we have the other two counselors that also work on different, looking at grades and things like that. This one is truly gonna focus just on college and career readiness.
That's awesome.
I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, is this one that I know?
This is a grant that lasts for a while and we did, um, discuss with, um, Mr. Irving the fact that we would be able to, to fund this later on, uh, out of LPAT funds. He would just have to fund that LPAT fund.
I was worried about.
I was also very, very worried about that myself, uh, but the, yes, this is.
I, I just wanted to add that this position will also help to increase, um, our career college index point two to save on the Alphabell dashboard, and that's also gonna help support our SPSA goal that we had. Um, we worked it very hard with COVID. We were like sixty-five or sixty-eight percent, how much we're ready. After COVID, it dropped down to thirty percent. So this person will help to make sure that those pieces are in place because right now it's, it's kind of a big job. And we need somebody that can focus on it. I know one of our goals is also to revive the ABC, um, uh, early college camp, coming to the early college campus after schooling, getting those teachers back. Um, that takes a lot of like liaison working between the two institutions, making sure that the student paperwork is over there. A lot of this left time is now not available to us. But helping those kids, because a lot of those kids come from homes that they don't have parents who ever went to college. So the parents don't know the pathway to support the kids. We're hoping that this position will be absolutely that. Helping kids, um, helping kids enroll, to make sure they have support, to make sure that they're working with the CTE people, to making sure that the pathways get completed. Those are awesome other ways to show that our students are becoming college ready. So it's gonna, it's gonna really help a lot of this stuff on our SPSA. And our overall graduation too.
We're gonna be able to financially support this for several years.
Yes.
Can I just add something to what Mr. Lysin secondly, we're talking about. Um, in that, I believe it was Monday, it was Monday with the, with the team from Hannah Bell Community College, University of Rosemont High. And, you know, our students, uh, who all have seen free tuition. And I talked to them at that meeting and how it was possible that our children, we get, uh, our students can get, um, their books taken care of, because sometimes the books are an issue. I also mentioned this Monday night to the president of the college. And he has a couple of pockets of money. And he's going to see how he can, um, take, uh, take care of our students' books as a reward in these classes. So would you tell me a break?
Anyone else? Any persons?
I, I, as a parent, I want to make sure and have the staff member, because once the kids want to go to their school, my students, I want to make sure that if they do want to go to college, maybe their credits aren't as college ready as they should. Are we gonna give them the support they need to make sure that they will be going to?
Absolutely. This program is supposed to.
That's the whole point of this whole thing. To help them so that they don't have the issue with not being good enough.
Yeah, we can't go, which that's not, you know, because I'm a first family, first one side of college in my family. So it's possible. I just don't want, yeah, I don't feel wrong. My mom doesn't feel wrong. I'm, I want to be sure that our students have that opportunity to go to college just because their, the family doesn't have the money. I want to make sure that they, you know, do it.
This sounds like a good move. Make a motion, or this is just a.
Yeah.
So I can just say so. Okay. And I don't know what motion to do.
Will you put on that?
Okay, you got it.
So Saturday A through G completion, are they, are the counselor also helping with the application process in making sure that they have structured and all that?
Yes. Very much. So that's part of that motion for. And how will you start?
Thank you. Anybody else?
Do you have a question?
I do have a question for you.
Um, I know right now, do we have anybody in that role or maybe like this? I know like you said, it's, it's a big job. There's a lot of stuff to be done. So do we have anyone at the school now that's helping some students with that?
Yes, but on a limited basis, because of all the other things they have to do. And that's why we're trying to go all piece of way. So that person can be more better. Where they can go into the classroom, they can market, they can do all that. Also, ABC has given us, uh, support for outreach. We don't have someone to come. And that will support as well to bring the table, not during lunch, get our information, sign kids up on an interest list. So that's gonna be a helpful piece as well.
Any more persons? Okay, uh, so we go, we go, we go, we go, we go. Second?
Second.
On paper, aye.
Part of, uh, hopefully, I'm getting excited.
Just current planning engagement policy for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, Miss Stacy?
Um, as part of Title One, we every year annually, we need to bring this to the board for approval. Uh, this is a, uh, parent involvement plan, basically. It involves having, uh, different committees and different, getting information from different committees, such as schools and councils, the ELAPs, the DELAPs, uh, and the district advisory council, uh, and putting together and getting input on this plan, which, uh, we did do. And making sure that we get, uh, information from all of our community, um. Thank you. Um, yeah, sometimes my brain. Um, so this plan, basically, it has all of that information in it. We've got input from all kinds of different places, um, to make sure that we have lots of staff involvement. This is an annual, uh, it's an, we have to, like I said, annually, uh, evaluating the plan and, uh, put, change it and add input from all of those different pieces. The items addressed in the parent family engagement policy are common barriers that exist for both schools and families, um, things parents need to know to assist their child's learning, how schools will help foster parent teacher relationships, and strategies to support successful school and family interactions. So there are lots of different things that, uh, different family, uh, parents and staff members have provided to put into these different areas and answer these different questions and ways that they can, they can help support our parents in becoming more involved in their child's education and the ways that schools can support that new happening. So that's what this plan is about. Uh, and again, this is something that we have to do annually, so I'll be bringing this to you every year. So I'll be bringing this to you every year for approval for the next.
Any more votes? Motion, I guess, but second. Second, I guess, all favor.
I agree.
And. Secondly, I reported from June, uh, June 2024, presented on March 7, 2022 by JLD and Associates.
All right, so the last one made a, from JLD, was out too hot on the article four, and over the, I think, you've done. So this is, is a follow-up of the ban. So we're going to, right here, we're going to report this on the second.
I will make a motion, seven. Seven, this is like, all favor. Mr. Irving, the second interim report. There was going to be an invasion from a brilliant, salient storm, stretching quarter for the microphone.
That line from the federal conference, it's up in there. It's in there. All stuff of things with the ABC grant requirement, the LLP, additional funding for the after-school safety programming. There's been a lot of places where the state has allocated more money than I had suggested back in summer. We're going to the. Our unrestricted, uh, fundings are based off of, you know, CAF, uh, tabular. There is some, or sorry, our restricted, well, some of the government funding not all of it because when I'm spending all of our award amounts in this year against the earlier actors. Some of it will be spent, but not all of this out in this one. And this year does include the personal instruction grant and standard loan agreement, whereas for those funds expire in August of 2022. Our anticipated underdated, our underdated ABDA is still off Ohio's 19th one this year. So we're at three thousand three hundred eleven point fifty-six. And our reserve, uh, we, we kept it second in term at the end of this year, sixteen point three five percent. This is a table that is a breakdown of what we, you know, what it was, what first in terms, uh, projections were, or projected out second year. You'll see that there's increases in both federal, other state revenue, of SIDA check, and, uh, other one, or anywhere, things like the way of buying gross CD gigs or the co-advisance and things of that. More things have come in globally than we had anticipated in July. For the other side of the equation are expenditures. Second in term, we're anticipating forty-nine point four million dollars. As our total amount of expenditures, meaning unrestricted, restricted funds, um, one-time funding, uh, had we been able to zoom with our bill of money and expand further, what we're able to do or something, things including summer school, a regular day for summer school, expertise stipends, supplies for the candidates and other programs, such as the music program, you know, things like this, that I will, you know. Taking one-time funds and trying to follow standard and, uh, traction, well, learning, loss mitigation, and just making student engagement programs and trying to set up so that things can circulate from one campus to the next. So music and development, ready to go on the middle school, the passing parish, and I have the middle school, the lead in the CTE pathways at the next school. Also, we're moving in this, you know, faculty expenditure around, and send, send over marquise for health ed, with plants, and, you know, pictures. Um, for use for the middle school home injuries. We've been approved and have had very hard path, you know, trying to secure more vehicles that'll be advanced for the districts. And everything is not trying to need that crap to have a bus driver. There's, you know, a group small enough that the energy can be picked up. Things like that, where thankfully there are years to this, that opens on the supply chain and all of those problems we can work around and through. Our supplemental concentration hours in the L cap are nine million dollars. And salary benefits, they get seventy-six point eight one four by the budget expenditures. This is based off of the L cap and our one-time spending, they, of this type of long supplies and services. Just so that, or with the L cap, right, the point of that in three years, in a year, that we're also trying to bring back students. And I'm very sure how that was going to work and when everything was done, I'm going further down the road, so, you know, moving monetizations to this, a little bit of, kind of, you know, get back into a normal group for, like, what they're saying.
Okay, which we're.
Yes, seventy-six point eight one four. But realistically, that's what a lot of want time, money, right? That is with supplies and services. And some of that, you know, with one-time money and, you know, flowing out of the one-time money, you know. Would we have, if we only had the national money now, and this state is progressing in the more and more back into a categorical system of things like the universal 3K, the, you know, the different programs that the state is, you know, trying to continue some of these federal programs under. State generally gives a different umbrella.
But that number is going to increase next year in zone half point.
Uh, partially, almost still, we still have, most of our extracurricular, a lot of, more than probably eighty percent or S R three dollars. So there's a swell thing in there that, you know, just, our rough number, you know, the one-time money is not going away. I think, is, is some of it, but not all of it, there's still years of, um, out for, uh, for most of these positive stuff. And here is a breakdown of expenditures where, um, we have kind of a yellow effect going on between the budget, first in term and then second in term. Certainly, we look at certificated salaries, classified salaries. Um, they give, and that's partially, uh, whether you can just slow start this year or this certificated, whatever. The deepening season that we get, move from the, certificated salary and little bits down into more of a services. We've had to bring in contractors and some things like that, like, you know, get sort of two different points in the budget. This also takes into account for the, um, salary increases that were associated for this year going forward, as well as one percent for next year. All right, this is this year's stuff, so that doesn't have a one percent for next year. That's reflected in the multi-year projection. But, um, yeah, so for, obviously, you can see that things that, you know, increased on the expenses higher and a lot of the suppliers and services and all of that are rather with, uh, the developed plans for S R three and, um, ELL and all of those funding things. Um, just trying to, you know, use them as smartly as possible before we end up with that, you know, still having money in the year to get back to this. If we don't get some of this. So these are the earlier assumptions for the multi-year projection. Our restricted recipients are still based off the, I'll say that's got the layer more again. ABDA, uh, still the whole R ones. And then our restricted funds, uh, include, doing, like I said earlier, the ELL and IDI, some P S R two. But again, you know, that includes S R, all of our S R three, the A T grant, the ELLP, other funds that, you know, as the year has gone on, the state has announced. Oh, by the way, it was like, yes, they did this, so either we haven't been told what the allocation is, or we haven't been awarded those funds. So we, you know, or we've been awarded the funds, yet we haven't afforded the funds. So what we have a dollar amount of, we're supposed to get, we haven't actually seen that in the, um, go, like, you know. And these are, are, this is my assumptions for the years going forward. Um, ABDA, you know, this year, trying to follow what the whole R ones was. It's, you know, between quarantines and everything else for students, our ABDA is hovering around eighty-nine ninety percent overall on this one. What better handle on that next month, A Q is due, uh, April fifteenth. All right, well. Ideally, A Q is done, April fifteenth is expected to be the one sixth of the new assignment. Yeah. Several compliment increases, very, from three point eight to three point, three point three to three point eight five percent. This is, is trying to take into account staff and call movements for staff as well as, um, make adjustments for retirements and the corporates from the district, uh, folks like Mr. Wallman and Lula, that, you know, are one of the southerners that go where their replacement comes in, and they're, you know, kept a step of eleven at the same. So off the compliment, I don't have in front of me, but, you know, trying to make that adjustment, um, with, you know, uh, the information I had available at the time to live against it, you know. Naturally, it's helpful, you know, at, you know, I mean, March fifteenth. And I also do, to turn this report in as a, I'm not going to explain all that stuff. So, you know, one of those fantastic tiny things, I'm trying to make a projection. Um, it does include CPI based off of school services at California's very core as well as projected increases in employee pensions, so our story of the earth. Um, right now, federal category funding is projected as flat because I, I'm not entirely sure, I'm sure there will be an increase, but I don't want to be overly optimistic about that increase. The, you know, paint a rose or picture the, what the reality is. And then I feel that ELL funding was from one year only. And then S R two, S R three will be, you know, used for the next, partially this year, and then of course the next two years. These are, are other kind of balances, uh, what's this? Okay. Done, I'm done. I said. All right, here's the multi-year projection for the next three years, sorry. Um, we're looking at sixteen point three percent of this year, up to twenty-seven point one six in the twenty-three, twenty-four year, over the next. Um, several reports over the next year of, like, the terms, these numbers will change. As we notice them change over time, you know. And now, sorry, getting that myself with other funds. Um, margin, since first in term, the own home, the bigger funds is under by currently. And this is projected to be in both of, seven point two million dollars. This is due to the refund from the, uh, inclusion of, which was developed elementary school program. So right now, until further work is done, designing and developing, hiring contractors and all of that, and start for the high school cafeteria program. This is where we are with all these funds. All right.
Yes, yeah, can you hear the president, you want to, uh? You said it? I don't know if we are. So, talking about the reserves. Percent of budget that are in reserves.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the statement part is three percent.
Yes.
The board would like to see certainly ten percent or excess of that percent. Well, and what was recorded was ending this year at sixteen point three percent, and next year at twenty-three point eight, and the third year up twenty-seven point one six. Now, I had sent you an email, Robert, and I appreciate your response asking about how to calculate those reserves.
Mm-hmm.
And when I used the line items you gave me, I got different. So I got returned to twenty-five percent.
Were you using, were you looking at slightly restricted or?
You, if you're in how you said, take line I, um, D E two, and buy, buy line B eleven.
Yes.
And I got significantly different percentages. So did we miscommunicate?
I believe so. I mean, I can hear, I've had, and, uh, within that.
My line B eleven is the reserves in dollars, I agree with that. But it's this lines of budget, total budget dollars that I should be using to drive. Because I tried every one of these numbers and I didn't come up with the same sixteen point three five.
Well, you meant the trajectory.
I know, that's why I asked. And usually, I'm just thinking about what I need to do here. As my students, especially I'm one of them.
Did you say you came up with a higher percentage?
Yeah.
Hey, that's even better.
And, well, yeah, it's even better, you know, as we prepare going to the next couple of years. Just working with the district on how these funds could be applied for the benefit of everybody.
Benefit of the students.
Benefit of everybody.
The, uh.
And we have, it's, uh, clearly, we have to be competitive in salary benefits to be competitive in hiring, but of course, we need to say a little bit.
Right now, we're.
Right now, we're short years. So, uh, then, on the it doesn't have all the section, of course, all of the, you know, when you drop your order, then it basically.